Join me in the DPW Subcommittee and Town Council Tuesday, March 22, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Councilor Steves. We don't have full members here, so if you could sit in, I'd appreciate it. Councilor Lozo, if you could sit in, I'd appreciate it as well.
Yep.
All you need is three.
Well, there's just us two.
Oh, you've asked both of us.
I asked both of you. Oh, that's true.
That's true. You think you're in, I think Mr. Adams can handle it.
I can see they look pretty for you.
You can do it, or are you?
I'll hand it over to my friend Scott.
You're all hot.
So you can take triple A, right?
All hot.
So, Councilor Lozo will sit in. Thank you. Consider an approved joint DPW Town Council meeting minutes on February 24th. Gus, did you get a chance to look at them?
Classic call. I had a chance to read them.
All right. Well, we can postpone until next meeting. All right. Citizens Forum, if there's any citizens in the... I don't see any. Any citizens want to talk tonight? Okay. Okay, seeing none. Presentation and discussion with StanTech regarding projects completed in town allows Subcommittee members to ask questions to address any concerns. I guess that's up to you, Heather.
What's that?
Agenda item number five.
I will let that step right up and allow the Subcommittee to present.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. James. Thank you, Members of the Committee, for squeezing us into your agenda for tonight. My name is Gary McCarthy with StanTech, and with me is Justin Monat as well. And great, we wanted to come and kind of introduce ourselves to you guys. Yep, we got a handout for you. And thank you. Justin's doing that. Just a little intro on us. We've actually been working, StanTech's been working its approach at the airport for over thirty years, and we've been working with DPW for ten years, and just about ten years. And during that time, we've provided services on all different projects at the water plant, wastewater plant. No problem, no problem. And so, I mean, we provide civil engineering services, process engineers, architectural, mechanical, all those services to the town. And tonight, well, actually, our aviation boots actually have been working in town since 1989. I spoke with John Henry, who's our PM on those projects, and John tells me he's got an active project at the airport now. They're reconstructing the runway, so it's been busy. I guess that construction activity is going to begin shortly. But tonight, I didn't want to take up a lot of your time, I know you guys are busy, but wanted to introduce ourselves and then, you know, give you guys an opportunity to share any thoughts or concerns you have in projects that we've done in the past. And in preparation for that, we put this table. What I tried to do is guess what your concerns were, maybe regarding changes on projects. And so that's what that information is there. We've done a lot of projects at the... There's a lot of storage tank there. We did a while back. A lot of work at the wastewater plant. And again, as you can see from that, I think our performance has been pretty good with regard to changes relative to the total project cost. And, you know, considering the fact, there's a lot of federal money out there now for infrastructure projects. Your community is positioned for that money, and you have significant need for your infrastructure. And we've been doing work in town here for a long time. If there's concerns about what we've done in the past, we'd really like an opportunity to address that with you and then help you to implement those projects that you really need. The federal money is really favorable with regard to grant money, and that's going to get better even over the next couple of years, whatever we're hearing. And so, again, that's, those are projects we'd really like to work with you guys on, work with Heather and Matt on as well. But if there's any specific concerns regarding what we've done in the past, I'd really like an opportunity to talk to you about that tonight.
All right, thank you. Before we proceed, I just wanted to make mention that our citizen members, Kevin Splain and Steve Lozo, are at the meeting. So you can step off. Does anybody have questions for step?
I don't want to get lost.
Does anybody have questions for step? George?
Lucky, I can buy a seat tonight. Moving back, I was on the Airport Commission, and back in the day, it was DePra Henry. StanTech bought them, and as an Airport Commission member, we were concerned of the change of ownership, that things were going to change. It did change. It changed for the better. And StanTech was an excellent engineering firm for us at the airport. Unbeknown, I think, to some views, is that airport funding, when StanTech would do the initial design stages and that, they upfronted the money. They didn't get paid it, and if we lost the grant, they didn't get paid, and they always understood that. I don't know if it's still that way today. But they were a good company to work for. They fulfilled the needs of the airport during the contentious days of the landfill. Helping us with grants, making sure the money was there, was back then with Steve Langley, you know, God rest his soul, and then there's Urban Deck. So they were a very good company for the airport as what they did, so just wanted to say that.
Thank you for saying it. I was, I've been with the company for almost thirty years, and I was with DePra Henry before we were.
You don't look that old. You wear good.
All right. Are you all set, George?
Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Chris. I was curious about the listing here for general engineering services for, specifically for the Elm Street sewer repair study. I'm kind of vaguely aware of what's going on with that, but could you kind of summarize what you're actually doing with that project?
What we did was just some initial consulting to DPW on how to resolve the problem. So I, it didn't turn into a project for us, eh? But that, I just wanted to point out a couple of, a couple of projects there that we've, beyond the construction projects, we've worked with DPW. And specifically for us, there was a recent project with the East Main Street utility and roadway reconstruction project. And the way I understood it is the DPW had recommended StanTech based on our proposal and our fee, and the committee chose to go a different way. I mean, that's, that's how it goes. We understand that. But if there's, if the reasons for that going a different way, you know, with the different consulting firm was based on anything that we've done in the past, that's why we give everyone an address there.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. And really hope to do some more, some more work with this, with the town in the future. Thanks.
Be free to answer.
Yeah, my pleasure. We have some extra ones. We'll just leave them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, agenda item number six. Discuss review whether to recommend RN BSC Group Incorporated using local American Rescue Plan Act funds for up to $5,400 to help prepare a building, rebuilding American infrastructure and sustainability and equity raise grant application to reconstruct Hamilton Street. Approve applying for the raise grant due April 14. Approve the town manager to sign any related paperwork.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Town Manager?
As do Miss Dean, as you see in the conference.
I submitted a memo with details, as with other past agenda items, that I viewed as planning and development Subcommittee because by nature, it's a grant, that's the Subcommittee I work with. It was brought to us recently, how do we make these decisions about which Subcommittee's to go to? Well, this is a full-on surface improvement project, a DPW project, so I brought the proposition to the Town Manager and the DPW Director, whether we can go forward with this request to Town, to the Subcommittee, and if so, should we go to DPW? They suggested yes. This would be similar to the EDA Rail Trail, where we hired a consultant to prepare the grant. This is an insanely aggressive time. And so, I, for one, don't want to see us lose the opportunity to go for these one-time funds that we're seeing available. We received local ARPA funds, the state received ARPA funds, agencies in the federal government received ARPA funds. These are, at the federal level, through DOT, federal ARPA funds. This is the first round of discretionary funds that's been made available for states, municipalities, tribes, whomever, to be applying. I highly recommend we pursue this. I cannot do it. I need a consultant to do the application for me. Heather and Matt do not have the capacity to be able to work up such a sophisticated cost estimate in such a short amount of time in light of all the work they're already doing. And so, I went out for quotes. I received the, the cheapest quote was from BSC Group, who recently helped us put together the application for the rail trail. And the application is due on April 14. That this would come to Town Council on the 3rd, on the 28th, for them to do this application in over a two-week span with us. And the Hamilton Street project is unique in that it exists within one of our highest percentage low and moderate income census tracts. It is therefore eligible for what, within the definition of this grant, is called a historically disadvantaged neighborhood, which therefore qualifies us for applying for more than the required 80%, 20% match. I know this is similar to the EDA Rail Trail, where I said, we can go for 100%. And then they came back and said, if you want to be competitive, you have to pony up some money. And then we were lucky enough, thanks to work through the Town Manager, our local legislators, our, you know, state-level governor's office to secure funding through them, and we're, thanks to Town Council, ponying up the $400,000 there. I would say, let's start with 100% with this grant, and at least get our hat in the ring. And if they say we need to come back with our own funding, at that time, we discuss it, or we say, no, it's off the table. But I would say, at least we try at this point. Again, we're unique in that we have this historically disadvantaged project entirely composed within the census tract.
All right, thank you.
And I will add, as far as the matching, we haven't really looked at the budget for the water and sewer to see, but considering water and sewer will be part of this project, we could definitely fund anything that is needed as far as a matching grant out of that pool of money, or, you know, future monies, so.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Councilor Steves?
Would it be, if it becomes necessary to do a match, would it be legitimate to use other ARPA funds to match up?
I think that question would have to be asked, if that is acceptable, you know, in the grant schemes. We probably don't know that answer yet, at this point. You would have to go through the funding agencies. And we saw, and right, I may.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I have not spent a lot of time digging into the match details because I'm going into it, assuming we're not wanting to need the match. And speaking with Heather, it may even be difficult for us to use the water sewer match because it would need to be part of the April 14 application in the budgets. It would have to line up with everything right now. And we're doing a surface improvement, so that would almost be concurrent work and not work within the project. But we'll have the consultants help us work through some of these details.
And you're just looking at repaid?
So.
Doesn't it also need water and sewer?
It does. It needs, as Heather would say, soup to nuts. And in my world of CVVG, if you open the road and you, at that time, need to repair the water sewer, you repair the water sewer. So that, you know, at the federal standard there, it is allowed to be included in the project. But Heather and I aren't sure if, under these circumstances, it will be allowed. I asked her what MASTOC standards are for comparison, and they would not let the water sewer be covered within the grant, or within the project. So.
Well, they do. They just don't do it carte blanche.
Okay, so then, under that definition, I would say we have a chance.
If it has to be changed because of the change in the scope of the project, then they allow you to change it, just kind of the way it was.
So again, I think this is why we need some professionals.
And the timeframe is too across the country.
Melissa? Councilor Lozo?
So we're talking from Main Street in the Globe to Main Street, where Cumberland Farms is, all of Hamilton Street?
Minus what would be included in the hook, lather, shell, like, right?
Okay.
Probably to the new book project, because we actually have other proposals to do that.
Now, what if we run into some of that brick underlayment that's on the Hamilton Street, which I think is still in certain sections? That's all?
Yep. That's what we'll be proposing, is that it's complete reconstruction of the road base.
Then we're a surprise leader, thanks.
That was one of first, Heather's first comments today.
What if we were to do something like, tie, see if we can figure some way to tie that into some of the other efforts the state's events have been trying to propose, to redesign downtown to recreate that whole trolley network around Hamilton Street? Public transit.
Well, that's for another discussion, I think.
I mean, that's obviously a much bigger problem. But, I mean, that would be an ideal.
All right.
Rebuild it, have it actually won.
Does anybody else have any questions? Any questions? I just have one question. Why did we decide Hamilton Street? I thought, Mr. Town Manager, that you were going with best-first policy. Hamilton Street is one of the worst streets in town, needs major reconstruction, which I'm happy to see it done, but now we seem to be changing the policy.
I'll attempt this, because I think this team has been me out. But I believe this is based on the demographics of the area, and this is a qualified census tract area within town, right in that particular area. So this road needs a lot of attention. It qualifies specifically for this grant, and that's what I'm doing.
And if I could just add to that, you had, when you did your best-first ranking, you left Hamilton out of your yearly appropriation because you knew that the amount was so high, you weren't going to be able to tuck it into that. And so that was one of those that you were sort of leaving for pursuing additional funding. Hence, this is one of those, you know, it seems to fit in line with all the discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Just a question.
Melissa, see?
So, if we get this, we get this grant money, we all get so forth, what's the, what's the idea for when to do it? I thought you, I thought you said you'd have to, you'd have to do it after the river crane strike.
Correct. So I joked in the meeting about ARPA funding the other day, that wink, wink, we have to complete it by 2031. In the guidance I was reading, you have to, you have to have obligated the funds by X and completed the project by 2026, but that all funds have to be spent by 2031, in fact. And so I'd have to dig deeper into what that is. But I anticipate that we're doing river crane in the CVVG fiscal year '21, which Town Council is accepting on your March 28 agenda. That will pursue, we'll pursue that over the next year and a half. So that's.
We also have the tip project that will be coming in.
24. And so, so you could, and we've talked this through with BHB, whether this is a realistic timeline. Presume you've completed the river crane design. You can then begin the design of Hamilton while you're building your river crane. And so you can tuck this into 2024 to be completed in 2025.
That would be the ideal situation, is that you do river crane separate, do the hook and the tip project next, and then come back and finish Hamilton Street. Yes, it's a lot of disruption in one area, but it's construction.
Get it done.
And again, these are one-time funds that we may not see again. I fear that, you know, for instance, with the EDA Rail Trail, we may not get that grant, right? We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket, that that's the one bucket of ARPA funds we're going to pursue. Let's, you know, get our hands in wherever we can and give ourselves the best fighting chance for some of these funds.
You all set, Gus? All right. There's no other discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda item number seven. Discuss transfer request for $12,500 specialized services, snow and ice. Overtime, snow and ice. Covering costs of overtime related to possible upcoming snow and ice event in late March, early April. Entertain a motion to recommend that Council approve such transfer.
So move.
Mr. Town Manager?
Let this continue.
So the good news is, we overall are doing actually okay in snow and ice. We're still not, we're not over budget as of yet. My page doesn't have the comment. Well, we had a balance remaining of, prior to the last storm, of $7,507.94. We just completed payroll. $3,444 were spent in the last two weeks on snow and ice events. So, in essential, we could stay under budget this year. I have a hard time predicting the weather a month out. Two days out, some days I don't. So, you know, I want to make sure that we're not going over our salary line item. I know, you know, kind of planning ahead. In addition, in the other item that we're transferring out of, which is our, what we call specialized services, which is the catch-all for all the contractors and where we purchase salt and everything else, we have excess funds still in there. So just to balance it out, to make sure that we're covered, that we have enough in our salaries. In addition, when we do settle our CBA agreement, there will be additional money that has to be paid out of the CBA to offset the change in salaries for overtime. So this will allow us to have that in, and it might already be a wrap way. So it's a kind of a number I picked out, saying if we had a major storm, we'd still be okay. We had even a couple, two minor storms, we'd still be okay, and hopefully be able to cover the CBA, any changes in the collective bargaining agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Councilor Steves, just one quick observation. I know that this does make sense, and it's, you probably guided it to plan for this event, but with snow and ice, we can deficit spend if we need.
You can deficit spend the whole, right, correct. But I don't, I choose, we're not deficit spending here. This is just one of the accounts, so it's just, it's transferring from one account to the other to make sure that we can cover any salaries and, you know, don't come into after the fact and say, I couldn't cover salary. Just planning.
What's up? Just one?
What happens with this 12-5 if we do not, we're hoping you don't move it? Does it go back to that snow and ice special services, or does it stay in that overtime?
It stays in the overtime until the books close at the end of the year. If we're, for some reason, at, so if I come to you in May, let's hope that I can, and I say we have $70,000 in the Town Manager, and Karen agree, and we say we would like to purchase something out of snow and ice, like a vehicle like we did last year, then that money could be transferred back into that to be able to purchase that. And if it doesn't, if we don't spend any of it, it just goes into that free cash account at the end of the year, like when it gets certified, okay? Any of the remaining funds gets turned back over, either place.
Yes, thank you.
If we deficit spend, say, a month out, because after the month of April, usually it's pretty low. What would be the difference if we just deficit spend and then know the exact amount at the end of April?
I guess there isn't. I just take it as the fact that you guys, in Karen's world, there's a difference. She would rather have me be upfront, know that we have money in that account to pay for salaries, and know that the salaries have money in the account.
For me, we're guessing at what it's going to be. We don't know what it's going to be. But if we deficit spend it, we know what it's going to be, and we can just transfer the exact amount. I don't know why that looked all right to me. I don't know how to deficit spend that.
Why, you thought that was okay, because it was snow and ice? And you know that it, and you know it's allowed. I think, I think in this case, there's only two accounts in this, in that whole line item of snow and ice. This, it's either contract, it's either outside stuff or sound. Either place, you're, what, really where that comes into the deficit spending is if I was going to exceed that $400,000 budget. That's really where they're talking about, that it's okay for you guys to allow me to deficit spend until you figure out when it's going to be balanced. Where, where something catastrophic would have to happen, and it's not going to. We're not going to spend that amount of money, which is the good news. We're still going to be under budget in our overall snow and ice account. This just gives me the security of, we're planning ahead, we already know the money goes back. I can't spend it on anything else. It only can be spent on snow and ice overtime. So it's either going to go back into the free cash next year, or if we get all done and feel all comfortable, we'll transfer it back out into the other one. And if you choose to spend it then, we choose to spend it.
Okay. You all set? Lozo, you have any?
No.
Somebody else? Okay. In that case, all those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. China, agenda item number eight. Discuss transfer request for $691.27 from uniform allowance. To licenses and stipends. To provide funding for payout of prorated licenses and stipends for two retirements per union contract, Article 25. Entertain a motion to recommend that Council approve such transfer.
Motion. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
Again, I can let this play.
Okay, thank you.
So we have two members, one who has actually already retired, and one that will be retiring at the end of the month. Under their contract, we have to pay them out a prorated, a prorated amount on their license and stipends for this year. The way we pay stipends, we pay them at the beginning of the year, and it's for the month, so we'll pay them like the first week or so in July. And it's for the previous year's work. So because they're retiring and they won't have that in their contract, they have a requirement that we pay them a prorated amount. At the time, we couldn't really budget for that because their retirement dates weren't set. So in order to pay that, I actually did have some additional money left in that account, but I will need this difference of $691.27 to cover those stipend retirements, which will go down to zero remaining money.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Senator Steves?
Are you expecting any more people to retire in the next year or so?
In the next year or so. So as part of the budget process, we, I ask. So of course, something could come up. They could unexpectedly decide they need to retire for whatever reason, but nobody else has come in and said that they're going to retire, so.
You good? All right. Seeing nothing else? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number nine. Discuss revision to parking permit key dash 0014. Revision one for reduction in no parking zone on Dresser Street as recommended by Traffic Commission.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager?
So this came up in Traffic Commission because there was an issue with a resident down there. There was no parking in front of his house, and he was trying to determine why there was no parking in this one area in front of his house. So he came to Traffic Commission. We went out and looked at it, Shane and myself, and, and speaking to some of the other members who have actually been on it for a lot longer. They thought it was related to when the rehab center used to get trucks that would come in that way. They needed more room to make the swing because it is directly across the street from the rehab center. But their parking lot design and everything has subsequently changed, and it's no longer an issue with the swing. So we felt very comfortable that we could open up to be, allow parking. So that, this is the revision for that permit. So now, basically, at Gardard Street, heading up to Hill and Dresser Street, there will be a parking. People were parking there, and they had been historically parking there.
There, people were parking there and they had been historically parking there, even though it had a no parking area sign, so there was an issue with some tickets, but...
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Also Steve?
Yeah, just to clarify, 'cause I was reading, reading these three par, these parking permits here, and it seems like they're contradictory. One of them says no parking north side of 45 feet east of Goddard to Goddard intersection itself. The other one says to, that the current is, if I'm reading appropriately, is that it goes to 125 feet west of Goddard, which is, which is that yellow house, right?
It actually was meant to go up the hill. So, it should've been, yeah, that's west, going up the hill, yes. So, it went almost, it went to the next street, actually.
Franklin. On Goddard, Goddard Franklin.
Franklin, yep.
But that...
And, but it starts previous to Goddard. It goes, it starts before Goddard, goes to Goddard, and then goes from Goddard beyond 125 feet, which is what we're taking off.
I see, okay, so you're allowing that section.
Yep.
Okay. So, it's, okay, same section. All right. Do you think, do you think that there should maybe be at least one space there?
It's, the parking is, it's all, it's the same setback that we have on all our corners and it's fine.
Was it 20 feet or something?
Yes, yes. I think it's 20. But that doesn't get its own separate parking permit, 'cause that's in the general rules and regulations.
Can I all set, Councilman?
Yes.
All right. If there are no other questions, all those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number 10, discuss repeal parking permit P-00119-1, one hour parking area on Main Street from Chester Street to a point 127 feet away. This has been recommended by the traffic commission. This permit will be replaced with a new parking permit.
Motion.
Second.
I will just skip right to Heather.
So, in, going back, now that we finished Main Street, we were looking at all the Main Street parking permits, and we realized that this one was in place, and it was in place really for the privilege of the spa that used to be there and be open, considering it's been closed and it's not operational, and really, nobody is parking in that zone. We just wanted to clean it up and make no parking in that whole section. And as you will see in a subsequent parking, when we were looking at that, we realized that there was never a parking permit actually on file from Marcy Street to this location, so it was kinda ambiguous, so we're just going, that's what the new permit will say, the next one that comes up. So, this is just a repeal, cut and dry, off the books.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just to clarify, what, what this permit, what this statement in here says, the parking regulation, actually says that a permit will be issued for one hour parking for that spot. It doesn't say it's repealing one hour parking.
This is the permit that we are repealing.
That's one, yeah.
This is the current permit.
This is what the signature, this looking for...
No, no, this isn't.
That's what, this is what it says. It says it's actually creating it. It doesn't say it's repealing it. It's just restating the existing situation. It doesn't say it's repealed. And that's the intent, but it doesn't say that.
It says it repealed up here.
It says it right here to repeal it. Be amended to repealing parking.
Oh, there it is, okay. Probably should be cleared out of the desk somewhere.
And it says it here, repeal.
Says repeal right on it.
Mm-hmm. I can't read that.
It's okay. We all have those days. I do. I was starting to think that I had gone crazy.
It should be in the documentation.
It should be really, it should be really obvious, yeah.
All right.
Stamp with P.
Well, it's pretty obvious up here.
Anybody else have any questions? If not, all those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number 11, discuss new parking permit P-00156 for clarification of current no parking on Main Street to include no parking from Marcy Street to Chester Street, north side of Main Street. This has been recommended by the traffic commission.
Motion.
Second. Okay, Heather?
So, this is that subsequent permit that I was discussing, that we needed to clarify that from Marcy Street to Chester Street now will be no parking.
I'm just curious, how does, how does the people that own wells, have they had, have they had any...
There was never any parking on that section anyways. You can't park there, so I don't think they really care. I think they would, it would be more of a traffic hazard and nightmare for them if there were people parking there, so.
Okay.
This is just pretty much putting in place what current practice is.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number 12, discuss options for possible land acquisition within the watershed perimeter. Preliminary discussion with the landlord indicates willingness to sell parcel to the town of Southbridge. Looking to discuss options for purchase, and if the subcommittee is interested in purchasing this year or if waiting for possible 50% grant in 2023 is preferred. Obtaining information for the grant application will take up to six months. If the subcommittee is interested, water department will proceed as directed.
Motion.
Second. Heather?
Okay, so you do have the memo from Mr. Gregoire. Mr. Gregoire was, so we became aware, there is a grant that has come out multiple years over and over through DCR that can be used to fund to purchase watershed lands. So, we, so they had done some reach, some outreach to some of the landowners that are old historic landowners in the watershed from when the water company was not even owned by the town of Southbridge, previous to us being owned, not, the previous owners up in that area. And they still historically owned, there's a couple parcels that are still historically owned by private people. There's nothing on them, there's empty land, they're not really doing anything. We reached out to one, and one expressed their willingness to sell the land for what it was assessed at, saying that it really doesn't have any value for me anymore. You know, it was old historical family land, and yes, it's in the watershed and I'd like to just see it be town property protected under the watershed in the future. So, we kind of explored this grant application a little bit, and it required a lot of formal surveys and different things that would have to happen. So, there would be some costs that we would have to put out in order to even get the grant money. So, in speaking with Steve and us kinda talking about it a little bit, we said, "Does it really make sense for us to have to go out and spend some money just to get the grant money, 'cause it has to have a formal property survey, which is a relatively large parcel, you know? Or would it be better just to look and see if, within the enterprise account, water enterprise account that we have now, to go out and just outright purchase the property?" So, that's really what we're kinda looking, we can continue on looking at the grant, which we're not, there's no guarantee this grant will be funded again next year, I guess is the way to say it. And we can make sure we are prepared for when the, you know, 'cause it's a very short window, but you have to have a lot of information, so it's kind of contradictory, they give you this short window, but if you don't have the survey and everything all done, you're never going to be able to apply for the grant. Or would it be better to just look into seeing if, which I know we will have enough money in the water budget to be able to purchase it outright? That in itself will require us to have some discussion with the town manager about the proper procedures for the town to purchase the property, but at this point, we're kinda looking for a direction. We're not looking for a vote, just some discussion.
All right. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Also Steve?
I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the map now.
Yep.
And I was curious, so if we were to purchase it, wouldn't we still need to do a survey anyway, just to...
No, we could purchase it based on the deed reference. It's just that the requirements of the grant are stricter than what you would need for just a regular deed purchase, which we could do. It is described in the deed, it's just not a plot plan survey like they're...
And was this, was the property ever actually lived on at some point in that, if you remember to, or whenever it is...
I am not sure. I know the property just in front of it has an old foundation on it. I'm not...
This one, you mean this one here?
Yes. No. This one. Yep. Sorry for pointing. The one directly to the, if you're looking at the map, to the right, to the right. Yes. I believe has an old foundation on it. I don't know, I haven't walked that particular part of that parcel. It's kind of down, it's kind of into the woods there, I haven't really gotten in there.
I think I probably at one point accidentally hiked across it, 'cause we were hiking down on, down the survey, which I kind of missed the trail and wandering over breakneck roads. So, I can think we probably went there like 10 years ago.
There's nothing there that the current property owner was concerned about, like missing or having an old foundation or anything like that, that I know of, so.
Would this end up being put under Article 97? As, as watershed land? I mean, we protect the watershed already anyway, but it technically, as far as I said, most of it's not technically under, under Article 97.
I don't, we could look into it, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I honestly don't know, Gus. I don't, I don't know what the status of the rest of it is. It's under town control in our watershed. I don't know that we need additional protections, but I'd look into it. I'll ask Steve to look into it.
Just for clarification, what is 97?
It's the constitutional protection for lands that say, that if it's in Article 97, it basically can't be used for anything other than conservation.
Before I go to Mr. Lazo, Heather, did you have something?
Yeah, two things. Heather, do we know, I know it's only been a phone call with Mr. Sidlet, but do we know if we decide to do the grant application, if that price is gonna be held or not?
We do not.
And secondly, is if we...
And I, I would assume that if the longer it takes, the more opportunity that we could lose it.
And the second thing is if we purchase this, does this qualify to fall under that forestry program?
Yes.
We do. Thank you.
Councilor Lazo?
You said the assessed value, what is the assessed value?
$30,000.
In how, how big a proportion of it?
15 acres.
Yeah. Exactly.
See, our philosophy when we bought the water company was, anything around the watershed, automatically if it goes under the watershed, the protection is as stringent as that law. So, for myself, I would, I wouldn't balk on it, but purchase it. And just on the protection and the expansion of your watershed.
All right. Anybody else? Other questions?
Does the town own these parcels already?
No. Town doesn't own this parcel. I'm not sure. I think they own a parcel here. I'm not, I would have to call up to look at the other ones.
You live in those, you can do it, 'cause it's in the watershed.
So, it was...
It does directly drain into our watershed.
I'm sure it does. Did, did the town reach out to whoever owns these parcels here?
Yes, she is not interested at this time.
But it can't, can't be really good for me.
Nope. She just has told us she is not interested.
Okay. Whatever.
You all set?
Kevin, you know who it is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd deal with that.
You know, I, I was looking at these properties too. The, the home property is 32 acres, and that is assessed at $3,800 for 32 acres. And then the other one is owned by Harwood, Richard Harwood, and that's eight acres for $14,400. This one's 15 acres at $30,000. Just wondering why the discrepancy?
I am not the assessor, I have no idea.
This, this one seems to be locked in by these other two properties. I don't see how you can get to it. It's also like once removed from the reservoir.
Yes, it still drains towards it.
I, I bet that this one is probably, is probably under...
What?
It's, it's probably under forestry chapter 61A.
Okay.
If, if it's hull, it's hull forest products.
Yes.
They actually harvested.
I understand it's a good deal, I just don't see the reason for us to buy it, but that's me. If the, if the members want to do it, that's up to them. I personally don't see the reason to spend $80,000 to buy a piece of land. I don't see what, how it benefits us at all.
It, it just provides this additional protection that nobody does go back there and do anything. It is recommended by the DEP that you try to be in control of the most, the majority, the most as possible, and that's part of the reason why these grants do get put out there to purchase watershed property, but, you know, there is the plus and minus, you can wait, do all the requirements for the grant, which could easily cost you $10,000, 'cause it is, the way I read the grant, it, it was a survey that was required. And they're not cheap these days, so I, I don't know that there's a huge benefit of having to spend a lot of money to be able to get a grant. If it was something that you were surveying 100 acres and you were gonna get, you know, more additional funds, maybe it would make more sense.
Is there any risk of development on this side of the line, on the strip side? 'Cause I know that's...
Not that I know, I don't know.
'Cause I know that they're talking about developing farther west. I don't know if it goes this far.
That's on the other side of their breakneck road, I believe, so it's further.
All right. Maureen?
I just wanted to encourage you guys, this is very important, I think, to have this parcel of land right on our watershed, and as Councilor Lazo has pointed out, I mean, 30,000 bucks. I mean, I don't have it in my back pocket, but, but it's not like a huge amount, you know? And, and it is right on reservoir five, I believe.
Yep.
And, and this is our drinking water, you know, and if, if we sell it to somebody else, I mean, who knows what they're gonna do there? And if you can't get into our water, that would be horrible. I'd say go for it.
You all set?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so it's the members' pleasure out. Do you want to vote on this? She said she didn't really need a vote, but if you want.
I'm just a few...
I make the recommendation, send it upstairs.
Okay. All right.
Well, I, I would say vote to have us go forward with trying to do the purchase, instead of sending it to subcommittee, and that way, we can work on the purchase, and then we can bring it to council as a purch, I mean, I'll come back, but I know that there's legal, there's legal things that need to happen before we can purchase this.
Yep.
Right? I know enough to know that...
That's my motion.
Second. We're voting on, for you to go ahead of this, not going up to the town council, is that what you're saying?
Well, not yet.
I think it has to.
Are you thinking...
No, I think it has to go up for a recommendation, so the council could say, "We're recommending to you to do it."
We have to send it up.
No recommendation is to the council.
All right, so it's going up to the town.
I mean, it's gonna be the same thing that you're asking for, but the...
With a recommendation to proceed with the purchase of the property.
Yes.
That's it. Proceed with negotiations of the purchase of the property.
All right. All those in favor? I'm opposed. Thank you.
What a surprise.
Thank you. Mike?
Counselor, no better way than counsel, it's taxing spend.
Hey, real quick, are you sending this up to Nor with the agenda item?
Yes.
Okay.
Counselor number, agenda item number 13, discuss selection of engineer for chlorine residuals tracer study required by Mass DEP. Recommend selection of TATA and Howard for $17,900, and include the option for a water age system of a distribution system at the same time for $13,900, for a total cost of $31,800. Funding from water treatment capital and for $17,900, and Charlton Water System Capital for $13,900. Could I have a motion, please?
You have a motion.
Second. Go ahead, Heather.
So, the water department went out for requests for bids from multiple engineers. We received two quotes back. Tate and Howard was the lower option on the residual, chlorine residual tracer study, and the other consultant didn't provide a cost, even though we asked for it, regarding the regarding the distribution system residual study. So we're recommending we go with Tate and Howard for both parts. The residual tracer study is for our chlorine contact tank. It was required by the last inspection that was done up by Mass DEP, because we get inspections, and they wanted to recheck because we have put a mixer in there. They wanted to see, based on the tracer study, what our contact time is. So that is what they will be doing. They do tracer studies. In this case, we'll probably use our fluoride, so, which is what we've done subsequently in the past, and they'll, they'll be able to do some calculations, determine what our actual chlorine contact time is, and it's, it's actually a requirement of one of our previous inspections, so we're just following up on that. The second half that we're funding out of Charlton, previously we had done a residual study out in Charlton, a water age study where we traced the fluoride levels dropping off because fluoride drops off very rapidly in a, in the system and it can go to zero. So we wanted to use that as our trace to see what is happening for our water age. This can be done at the same time when the other study is happening, so that we'll do this over a period of time, watch how the residuals react out there, and be able to see what our water age is compared to what we had previously, now that the system has changed, now that we've had mixers in multiple locations of the system. It's, it helps us in our operations, it helps us in our, in the long-term planning out there to make sure that what we're thinking in theory is happening is actually what's happening in reality. So it gives us a reality check to what we, what the theory is. So as you know, we have to fund some capital things in Charlton anyways. They're in our budget. They haven't spent any of their money. We think this is actually a good use of their money.
All right, thank you. Any questions, Counselor Steves?
Are there any concerns about areas and edges of Southridge?
Yes, which we can, we can take samples at the same time when we're doing the line in Charlton. Our far reaches are the same, are same thing. We have very long residual times in different locations for different places, tillier, some of the locations, especially where they're isolated systems. So it's helpful for us too. Chloridines are wonderful. They do last a long time, but they're not, they won't last forever, so we need to kind of know.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number fourteen, discuss approval of three-year agreement with Utility Cod for access management system services for water sewer and highway for up to twenty-five users. The three-year agreement allows for a significant cost savings compared to the annual agreement currently used. This is a ongoing service that has been in place since 2016. This allows us to track work orders, inspections of water and sewer work, and service for our vehicles. This service is paid from Water Technical Services, Sewer Technical Services, and DPW Specialized Services accounts in FY twenty-three budget. Entertain a motion, recommend to council for approval.
Hello?
Hi, good.
Go ahead.
So as you can see, Utility Cod, which as it's stated here, we've been using in the water department since 2016. We track all their work orders in the water department. Every customer has an associated account. Anything that happens, major gets tracked, breaks, inspections, everything gets tracked so that we can see anything that's happened. Sewer Department is moving in that direction. They've been using it for inspections there, especially when they do their underground inspections, their video inspections, so that they can have this downloaded and uploaded right onto the web, onto, into a cloud system, so that they can track it and have it historically, and have it historically attached to that asset being the pipes on the ground. We've been using it in DPW as our, to track all the work orders done on our vehicles, so we can have historical costs and how much and what was done, and when the service was done over the past couple of years. And it's working out really well, and we're looking to expand it into our stormwater systems, because we have to start tracking our stormwater inspections and things that, that we do on our catch basin. So we're going to increase our utilization on it. As you can see, we, in the past, we've been pairing a yearly price that he provided us with a quote of what it would look like in the next three years versus what would happen if we had to pay the forty thousand dollars on an annual price, which is their standard. So we actually get a much, you know, much, much cheaper, huge discount by entering into a three-year agreement.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, Counselor Steves?
So have you looked into, for example, if this is on the collab, have you looked into the security facility to make sure that our data is as unattainable as possible?
Yes. So we've had multiple assessments of our water system, and they, they're very happy with how secure this is. And there's not a lot of personal data there anyways. It's not like, they can't directly get into like the operations of the water treatment plant. It's more like, there's a meter in this house, and this is what the house meter number is, type of information. And we went here and we inspected it on this date, and, you know, that type of information.
So they wouldn't be able to actually get into and screw with the house meters and stuff like that?
No. That's a whole separate system. This is just tied to that account number is that, but they can't, you can't touch the meter programming.
Okay, good, good.
They're distinct systems.
What else? Anybody else? I thought it was a couple of years ago, there was a water system that got hacked into.
Yes.
They held him for ransom or something.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
This isn't in the budget yet, should it be?
So this is subsequent, this has always been funded in every one of our budgets. So it's in like this year's budget. So it's planning purposes, but we have to enter into the agreement starting July one, so we're trying to get ahead of it.
Mr. Shenier, you're out of order.
There hasn't been a contract for it. This is like the first time that I think we've ever signed a contract. It's always been through White House.
The other thing that, shouldn't we, I defer to Counselor Adams on this, shouldn't we include the cost in the agenda item?
Yeah.
Yes. Well-
We could do it as a year one for fourteen point ninety-three.
Sure. Do it as a year one.
Sixteen, seven twenty-six, and year three is nineteen three hundred.
Yep.
All right.
So a total of fifty thousand, two ninety.
So I'll just take that as a friendly amendment. We're going to add the cost into this, okay?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, there's no other questions. All those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number fifteen, discuss surplus of sewer, nineteen ninety-seven Ford Ranger, last used in two thousand and fifteen after brake failure with approximately eighty-nine thousand miles. The vehicle will be set for auction, trade, and scrap. Entertain a motion.
Motion. Say it.
This is just a cleanup thing. This vehicle's been sitting down at the waste treatment plant, and somebody kind of said to me, I don't know, can we get rid of this? And I said, absolutely. Get me a picture and get me the details, and here are the details. And there's the picture.
It actually looks like it's a pretty good chance.
It's-
That's what's wrong with this.
It's, it is, so I believe the frame has already been repaired once. I know the brakes have failed once, and it had been mothballed, so they don't need it. They're surplusing it. We will auction it off.
Okay, thank you.
I would say auction it off, because you get more than scrap for that, that's right. So if you put it in auction, you will sell it.
All right.
I'd rather see it go to auction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Agenda item number sixteen, discuss proposed pavement preservation and paving work for 2022 construction seasons. Review tables of recommended preliminary roads depending on available and full funding amounts. In addition, discuss other roadway projects already underway, status and timing. This may have to go into a couple of meetings.
Yeah, no, and I, and I, and I think that this is a start of a conversation of what the DPW is looking at, and we can get some feedback and some guidance, but, so what you have in front of you that I just handed out is projects for consideration. The cost estimates that we based it on are attached in the back, so you know, you don't have to go through them tonight, but there are detailed cost estimates provided. We've tried to, some of the roads are some that I think we've had brief discussions on previously, like Ellis, Gulfwood Road, Boone Street, Coombe Street, Everett Parshing Summer, are words that National Grid has done work on, and there's potentially some synergy of getting some funding from them to make our money go further. Mechanic and North are obviously high-traffic roads that could benefit to doing a mill and overlay and improving some of our main streets and main areas. Again, Poplar Highlands were roads that were on our plan last year that we might want to continue and actually complete. And Moore Street is, you know, another road that meets the criteria that could have some benefit. We have a list of a couple of micro-surfacing roads. Charlton Street, which was on the list last year, Elm Street could benefit from a micro-surface and possibly will be tracked. So where you see the high, medium, and low, the higher what we selected as what we thought would be priority for the most bang for your buck potentially, as we can say it. We included Gulfwood up there because we've had lots of discussions in the past regarding Gulfwood. Last year, our funding was a million dollars. We estimate Gulfwood would cost a million dollars. So I don't know if Gulfwood's one that we table or we put in sections, or, you know, there's other ways you could do it, but I think you could do multiple different roads instead of doing a million dollars on Gulfwood and only doing Gulfwood with the money. You might want to spread your money out and look at, you know, doing some of your best, your best roads, you know, Charlton Street, doing the micro-surfacing on Charlton Street to extend that life of that road. It does need some patching in certain areas, but it's very selective. That could be done, and then it could be micro-surfaced. You know, getting more bang for your buck and doing more milling and keeping it on that way, until we decide how much money is available. And I think that's a discussion that we need to have still with what is actually, how is it going to be funded? Where, are you going to fund another million? How are you going to pay for that million? I know there's a bond already out there, but the idea, I know, was also to hopefully get offsets in money from the Manawata places. I think that the town manager can answer that better than I can, but, you know, do we really want to continue with a million dollars of funding?
All right, thank you. I'll start with Counselor Lazo first.
When you say Gulfwood Road.
From Charlton Street to the end.
Okay. I was going to say, is there any good part of it?
No. Well, the section right past my place to Torrey probably doesn't need full depth. It does need to be milled and overlaid, but it doesn't need full depth. So that's when we say mixed, that section previous to it, from right past Charlton Street School, not where you, but because there's a section that needs to be milled. Obviously, before my place, there's a horrible dip and bump that needs to be designed out. And then once you get a past Torrey, that needs to be full depth. Okay? So, and that's not even probably just milling and overlaying. There's no subbase there. I mean, that's not just, that's not reclaim. They're not going to be able to reclaim that road in many sections. Some parts they will. Some parts they're going to literally have to peel the asphalt down and bring in subbase because it's right on top of-
The last time they did this, they put the drainage in, they added Gulfwood and everything, they ground the whole thing down and paved the whole thing.
But I, you know, right, right past, I think there's ledge, like-
Well, he would raise the road with gravel above the ledge because he said the same thing back then.
Yeah.
It was on the right side. They were that big farmers to ledge out crops. And what they did was they hammered down a little bit, they ground it over. How much? I don't know.
Yeah. I think we have to just test it and find out. It just seems like there's ledge popping in places right there, and that's what we're saying.
I mean, the road is just gone.
I noticed you have the high priority ones, which definitely in need, I know that. Northwood Stock Road, where on Northwood Stock Road? I know it's a low priority, but whereabouts on Northwood Stock Road?
So that, I think that's the majority of it. It's just, so micro-surfacing, this is, goes back to that best first options and keeping your good roads in good shape. So Northwood Stock is in pretty good shape, except for it's starting to oxidize. So we're going to start to have problems if we don't start to do something to prevent that. So we want to also keep maintenance on our good roads so they stay good roads. That's why we're starting to do micro-surface and stuff of that nature. But she just gives that extra workforce.
Thank you, Ellen.
I'll go with Counselor Adams first.
Yeah, I'm not sure about Ellis Road. I totally don't disagree with that one. The Northwood Stock Road is something that I was going to bring up as well. I know there's potholes starting to pop up here and there, but they did some sealing here, you guys did some sealing.
Crack sealing.
Five years ago, or four years ago, I think it was. But isn't that considered a state road? It's not at all.
Nope. It's numbered, but it's not. The only state roads in the town are one thirty-one to the bridge coming in the Globe, and then past Golden Greek out, and then one sixty-nine to Vinton Street.
Okay, all right. I would just say it was because of, it was a state road.
Just because it's numbered doesn't mean that it's state road. One thirty-one is, Main Street is all one thirty-one. Still our road.
All right.
No majority of it.
Yeah, I just-
Yes, but Washington as a tip.
A question to Heather, maybe. Some of the paving projects that you're suggesting, a national grid pay their-
Yep.
Some share of it.
Yep.
And for instance, on Everett Street, Summer Street, Carrick Street, I believe, you've estimated forty-five thousand dollars as a, as a estimate that they're willing, I don't know if they're willing to, but it's suggested.
So they pay based on whatever, so what they have agreed in the past for us is they pay based on the cost of an eight-foot mill and overlay.
But they ruined the whole street.
That's, that street wasn't in good enough shape to say they're ruined. So, and that's what they say. They will not pay for the whole street. They will pay for eight-foot mill and overlay. Eight-foot, eight-foot wide.
Down the, down the road. How about all the laterals going off?
The laterals all get, all get their normal trench paving. And I agree with you. If they're within fifty feet, we can look at talking to them about it. But that's, that's one of those things that has to be negotiated once we get the actual bid prices in.
Is it time that this, we as a community start looking at the way that these utility companies-
It's not legal.
That these utility companies are opening up the roads, is there a way that we can force or cause a bylaw to happen? It's just like, the last time you told me I'm going to call it Flowmax. You said that the state says no to that, and-
No, National Grid says no to that.
Right, but you're by law in town, you're forcing to do that because other towns do it. Whisker does it. Communities do this, and I just feel that by forcing them into paving the road, we get longer life of the trench, because there's some beautiful jobs that they've done on the, up the High Street area, those kinds of, those pavement jobs were really nice. And again, I don't know if they're eight-foot, but-
They were.
But there's other areas in town that are terrible jobs that they've done. That's not holding up, and it's beyond the bond and those kinds of things.
Three years.
And I just feel that if you, if there's a way that we as a community with a lot of legal aspects is to look and see if we can cause a bylaw to happen, to use that Flowmax, because ultimately, regardless, whoever opens that road up, the customer's going to pay for that. And it's just that they do a lousy job, as far as I'm concerned, most of the time. And I think it's time that we as a community look to either tell National Grid, you don't want you go in here and bring somebody else in, or make them do what they're supposed to do. My son works for a company that does Eversource, does National Grid in the state of Connecticut, and it's all Flowfill, or Flowmax, whatever you call. I can't see why, he comes in to visit me. He comes over, he says, Dad, I cannot understand why they are required, they're leaving trenches like this, as even temporary stuff. Where he's a superintendent and it would never be accepted. They'd be back at the road that night digging it up and making it better. I just can't see why this community can't do that, because you go to other communities, it seems like they're doing a better job patching. And that's been my biggest beef coming to town, is to see the roads the way they are there. And if you go over a majority of these roads, their laterals going to some of these houses, their trenches going down the road, that are just failing. And it's not, it's not a reflection of what you do, but it's the reflection of this town that somebody's not doing the proper job, compaction rates, you know, they just fill it in. I don't even believe they do a test to see what their compaction rate is. I'd be questioning if they do that because I know that has to be done. And it makes me wonder if that's even being done in this community as those repairs are being done, because some of these things only last in a couple of years and they start settling. The Flowmax, or whatever you want to call it, I realize that it costs the company more money. Digging the hole doesn't make it any harder, because the Flowmax, you hook it up with a machine in there, and it just comes up like regular, and it just compactions it better, and the road trench lasts longer. So I don't know if it's something that, if you're down in some committee, you should go to them and look at and making a bylaw. I mean, you guys, you know, looking at that and making a bylaw to force them into this kind of repair. I don't know, but something needs to be done. And I truthfully don't think forty-five thousand dollars towards the cost of a- And I truthfully don't think $45,000 towards the cost of a half a million dollar project is a fair share of what's being done. I grant you, Everett Street is one bad, is a bad road to begin with, but, I mean, there's other, other streets. 13,000 bucks on Moon Street, Robin Street, you know, it's just, that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's, I think it's.
I just want to add that contractors have to have to be bonded to open the road and they're responsible for that, I believe, three years, that they have to keep that patch good. In some spots, they've done it and they have it taking care of it. I don't know who was supposed to enforce that, but I've noticed two years later, it's sinking down and it stays that way. And I haven't seen a contractor ever come back and fix it. So I just want to say that there is a three-year thing that they're responsible for.
Unfortunately, our bonds are only $7,500, so it won't go very far when we pull it.
So can we jack it?
Oh, we certainly can, but.
You all set?
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you.
Gus?
Yeah, since we were talking about the issue of these laterals and trenches, we happen to be going down Dresser Street and I noticed that you can start seeing the cracks in the, in the new section that was paved.
Yeah, we already knew that.
We already knew that, yeah. It's, I mean, it's obviously, it's obviously sinking in. It wasn't properly, properly, you know, underneath, so that's an issue.
All right, thank you.
And I don't want to see that happen with those streets.
Councilor Lazo?
I'm gonna hold off, I'm all set. Everybody's been basically hitting a lot of it. The only, the only thing that, that I want, let me just say this. I don't know, I mean, I'm looking at this, I think this is a fair assumption from high to low and various different ideas. At some point, I think we really have to take a hard look at the Dennison area.
I agree.
It's in tough shape. Whether you come from West Street and go up the hill or whether you go West Street right at the church and down around the loop, at some point, I think that, you know, that's in rough shape.
I agree, yeah, there's no sidewalks either. A lot of families living around there, no sidewalks, a lot of pot holes.
As far as the bond, the intent of a street bond for $7,500 was started with the intent that it would be a lateral.
Not a trench.
Not a major line going through. You put a major line going through, like Boston Gas, the whole street. And if we just roll back a little ways, I know Jack Tovin was one of the guys who brought it up to Heather and said, well, if they're paving half the street, why can't we jump on with them and make that street a full pave? So I think what's happening is we're kind of getting better at what we do by seeing the things that are being done. But there's a lot of work ahead, there's a lot of streets, I mean, we could all pick another one. But I think the Gulfwood Road is definitely, it was a priority in the beginning. It got bumped, I think maybe it should get back on the priority line.
I will say, we also talked about Dresser Street, which I know has been a priority. I spoke to National Grid. The gas work is not completed in Dresser Street and is not scheduled for this year. This year, they, just so that I, they are looking at doing South Street, which I think we all have seen multiple locations that they have cut up South Street and some of the side roads that go down off of South Street on the opposite side, school, water, winter, those streets in there to extend the gas. The other side has already been done, Highland, Newell, those sides have already been replaced. So it, it does make some sense to piggyback on their projects once they get the gas done. I will say this, when we say we're going to do a street, this is, there's some state rules and regulations and they've currently, they've been updating them and changing them. So when we say we're going to do a street, we have to give them like two, we have to give them heads up so that they can go. But they aren't going to contribute any funds for our paving. Unless we change our bonds, which we can, or we can change a requirement that they, we can see if we can charge them a fee per foot, but then we're required to do it. So it's a, there's a sticky little way we can do this. We can look at changing what's required in the bonds. We have to allow them to get into our streets. We can't really dictate which contractor they use, because that's up to them. We can be on them more and more. We've talked about getting another inspector in. We know that that's already included in next year's budget. That would be something that we could have them working on when potentially somewhat. They can't be there continuously, because if we're doing our own projects, they're gonna have to be on them too. But part of the problems that we have on our streets is our streets are in such poor condition when they, that you're not able to cut a nice clean cut. I think a lot of you have worked on them, you know, when our streets are already ravelling and falling apart, it's very difficult to get a clean trench line to pave against and have good clean corners. In addition, I know that they don't always do the best job, they get, might get a clean cut and then they have to undermine the road, which does not help. Flowfill would help in that situation. They backfill with sand, bedding, which should in all intensive purposes give you, they don't go very deep, should give you good trenches, but doesn't always. I will say with flow pack, flow fill, I have seen trenches push up and float. I think we've all been over Pleasant Street. That trench has been done twice, it's still floating, it's still pushing up. It's not always the best thing, because it does push, it can push. With, when it does that, I would rather see it done and left low and then put gravel on top of it, because then at least it gives them some cushion. But I'm not saying that we have the perfect answers. Every street can act a little differently than any other street. That's, groundwater makes a big difference, what the existing material makes a big difference. You talk to some contractors and they said, you should allow us to just put the material that came out of the hole back into the hole, because then it will all act as one trench, of one body, which makes a lot of sense too.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one other, because I think this will come up at some point too. This is how Chapter 90 is currently allocated.
Can I ask my question on this before?
Sure.
I'm sorry, Kevin.
Okay.
In reference to this, these are, these roads that you have listed here are not guaranteed getting done. They're, they're consideration, they're not time definite when they're getting done.
Nope, they were just our first pass of giving you guys feedback on what roads we, based on the pavement list and where it was, of what we would recommend and then basically giving you a landy list to say, once you allocate, say if you had a million.
Instead of going that far into.
I'm sorry.
My question ends up being in reference to, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say them all. Coon Street, Siskel Street, Rogers Street, Warren Street, Moon Street, Everett Street, Moon, Worcester. All those roads that dug up, like you were saying, gas company, we're gonna have to live with it. Worcester Street, Moon Street, it's been over a year and a half. So what's the game plan if these roads aren't picked to get done?
Then we allow them to do their eight-foot overlays and we walk, and we, they walk away, they're done.
So how come we have not pushed that issue yet? As a year and a half on Moon Street and all.
Because last year, the discussion was, we wanted to tag team them together. So I'm giving you the option. They weren't going to get done last fall. They can be, we can push them right, first thing this spring, but that means that either we're not going to do that or we don't think there's a value in that.
I'm just saying, we just, it keeps getting pushed and roads keep getting pushed and utility companies are digging them up and their, because that, they do a horrible.
Well, Moon Street's patch isn't bad, I just went over it today. It's really not that bad.
No, but what I'm saying now is when you start getting into Coon Street and, and that area and Everett Street.
Moon's, I, so I want to just, there, to me, I've done roadwork. The best thing you can do, and I get it, a temporary patch is a pain in the butt and it's bumpy, but the best thing you can do is to let it settle for a year. Because nothing, the best contractors in the world can leave a void and have it settle. I'm sorry, it happens. So allowing it to settle is going to give you the best long-term solution in the world. Sometimes you can't wait all that time, but we're waiting. Moon Street's not moving anymore, there's no pockets, there's no settling. I, I went up Warren, Warren's a mess. There's, there's no asphalt, there's, there's no asphalt, not, or Rogers, sorry. There's no, there's no asphalt there. Like, they can't even mill that. Like, I don't, that, you, we went up and picked up a piece of the loose asphalt. It was, it was not even an inch and a half thick. What are you gonna mill? It doesn't need to be milled, it, it's a mess. You know, it needs to be rebuilt. There was never enough asphalt put down there in the, in the first place. So we're gonna take some core samples, we're gonna see what's going on, but I don't even know that I can tell them to mill it, because when they mill it, they're gonna be right down to gravel.
I didn't know that was paved, I thought that was one of those old wheel and sand jobs. Which is about an inch, that's what I have.
Yeah, it's, it's not very thick. You can go pick up loose pieces and see, and see gravel. So we'll keep working on them with them.
Okay. You all set, Kevin?
Thank you.
So what I just handed out is the allocation of current Chapter 90 funds and what we're budgeting.
We have one.
Anybody else? So it's just where it is. As Matt said to me, currently, the only project that's, we're also working, that is also ongoing is East Main Street. And right now, there's no Chapter 90 funds allocated to East Main Street, because we're still in design. We're not, we haven't allocated a construction budget for it, so. West Street's on there, South Street's on there, our two bridges are on there, et cetera. Let's focus this. And I think that concludes me.
All right, thank you. I've got a lot to digest here, so I think we probably have to put this on the next meeting and discuss it somewhere. Anybody else have anything?
I just follow up on what you were saying about, about the utilities. Do you have a list of what utilities, what roads the utilities are planning on working on this coming up this year?
You mean, other than our water and sewer, or what do you mean for?
Well, like, like the National Grid projects and those kind of things, so we got some.
So like I said, right now, verbally, they told me South Street, Winter, they're, well, they're still finishing up Everett and all those things, but that whole section of South Street is what they have come to me and told me verbally right now. They haven't given me permits for it, but that's what they verbally told me.
You all set, Gus?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. The only thing I wanted just to ask was, have you done a walkthrough of Main Street? Is there any walkthrough?
That hasn't been scheduled with them yet.
Okay, and somebody called me up today and said there was a pothole in front of the post office?
Uh-oh, yep.
Okay.
I want to leave as many of them that are there, so that when we do the walkthrough.
Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? All right, okay. Agenda item number 17, discussion about the sewer pump station on South Street next to the entrance to the west barb.
Heather, I brought this up, can you explain? I've been driving past the, I don't know how many he has. What's the reason for that rental generator? And are we paying for that?
Yeah, the sewer plant's paying for it, but yes, it's a sewer. It's the backup generator for that pump station. The pump, the generator that's in there has failed and it's not repairable. So we have currently, we are purchasing our own portable generator, which will take that one spot, but it's.
I mean, it's been years that thing's been there.
It's been about a year and a half.
All right, so we are working on purchasing one?
It's already been purch, it's, so, welcome to delays with, but yes. It's, it is purchased, the change, the order has gone through. And, you know, but we have, we're required by law to have a backup generator and the one that we have currently doesn't work. So we did purchase one, so that we will have our own backup generator and then we will work on the new design of that station, probably having its own permanent outdoor generator.
So the one that we bought, is that?
That can be used.
Designed just there or is it gonna stay at the highway department and go wherever we need it?
It will go wherever it's needed in the future. Right now, we know it's needed there, so.
Okay.
It, and it, we, we picked a generator that basically can operate any of the pump stations, both water and sewer.
You good? All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, agenda item number 18, discuss Dresser Hill Road easement. Now, I just want to mention that I did get a call from the town manager. He asked that we postpone this. I, I'll leave it up to Councilor, Mr. Lazo, he's the one that wanted to sign. Go ahead, Mr. Lazo.
The reason for this.
I'm gonna object, and I stated my reasons and, one, it's a violation of the meeting law due to lack of specificity and two, there's pending legal action.
I'm still going forward.
Yeah.
I still want to go forward.
Well, I'm not gonna recommend any staff participate in this based on council's work and town attorney council's.
Okay, I just, I would like to say before you speak here that I don't know, I personally don't know of any legal action taking place on this one. And I don't know what law firm is calling to ask that this be postponed.
This has got nothing to do with anything he's talking about.
Okay, that's fine. All I'm saying is that I don't know of any.
Why was there not an address? We have to put addresses when we discuss a particular parcel.
Well, that may have been my fault.
Mr. Town Manager, you're familiar with what I'm talking about, but I want to, they want to offer you something. They want to offer you something. Let me talk. Mr. Town Manager, please.
One at a time, please. So I, like I said, I don't know of any law, law suit pending on this. I just don't know of any. And I think we all know what this is about, some pipe that goes under the ground. I think he just wants.
No, that's not what it's about.
Okay, so go ahead.
This is what it's about. The homeowners want to give the town an easement to alleviate any future problems from Dresser Hill Road to the Brook. They're willing to give it to the town. We thought, Heather and I talked about this, it would have, it would need engineering and all this done. They want to get the ball rolling, so there's no future problems that they had there. I'm not talking about the problems that are there. This is something new that they want to offer the town the easement. So the town can go forward, design what needs to be done to alleviate any future problems in that area. That's all this is about. That's it.
That's not what the letter said yesterday that came to the town, that it referred to our insurance company and their council.
It says right there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Lazo?
Even review. Well, I understand we have issues and if there's a legal thing, I understand that also. I was under the impression that we were supposed to fix that manhole to go down and then over into that where that retention pond was, which was the other house. And that was supposed to be tackled sometime in the springtime, when we ended up discussing it last year, or before the winter hit. And if that, if that's what we're talking about, I thought that was supposed to automatically somehow get into the wills.
Okay.
Maybe I misunderstood.
The settlement pond is put on a property that there is no easement on. I'm just trying to get this legalized to make the easement. Both sides of property owners want to get this down, right down the middle. Get it done, get it legal, so there's no more problems on who's who and what's what. That's all I'm trying to solve is the problem here.
All right.
As far as what's going on on the other side, I'm not bringing that up, Mr. Town Manager, at all. That is not my problem. I, I was, as a DPW subcommittee member, I want to just bring this forward so that the town can get it straightened out and get the legal right away, the will to give it to the town. They don't want any money for it. So that's what I want to get started, that's all. That's the only reason I put that on there. Thank you.
Are the residents here tonight? Are the residents here tonight at all? All right, go ahead.
Um, yeah, so the only reason I'm here. My name is Zachary Sherman, I own the property, 339 Dresser Hill Road. About a year, well, just about under a year ago, I was approached by, I believe, Heather, telling me that the town was going to approach me and my fiancee, looking for an easement on our property. All we're looking for here today is just what progress has been made. Right now, I just have a mosquito-attracting retention pond sitting in my backyard that I can't allow any of my younger bandit members near. So it's been just about a year now, nothing's been done, nothing has changed. Just looking for someone to shed some light.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Lynn.
Lynn, Petrow, Dresser County, 61. I'm feeling the same way as you are, because that's why we're here tonight.
And again, I would like to say that we are open to the easement. The only thing I ask is that it is approved by me and my fiancee. And I just have concerns about the trees. That will be right there, and that's all.
All right, thank you.
That's it, that's all I have, Mr. Town, please.
Okay. Did you want to say something? No? Okay. All right. All right, anybody else have anything on this one? No? Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Agenda item 19, discuss railroad tracks on Hook Street.
That was me. How that, we removed all the other ones, how come we can't get Hook Street what's?
It's part of the tip project, it's part of that design.
Oh, it's included in that now? All right, because it's been a few years.
Yep, it's all included in that. It's, yeah, so.
We're just getting dangerous.
It's been included in that to remove them in that project, so it will happen then.
Are you good on that one?
Yes, thank you.
Alright. Agenda item number 20, discuss and get update info on pile of contaminated dirt at entrance of DPW Garage off Golfwood Road.
So... It's only a discussion, but you know what? It's only a discussion, but I'm still on the school, so okay.
No, you don't have to bring it here. You can call me at any time and ask me questions, just like any other resident has a rolebook.
How can I get rid of that?
Yeah.
We're never going to get rid of that, it's going to be, um, so we have, we, we have, well, we've been working on, not me, but there's consultants that are working on the design for the closure of that site, including the contaminated pile of soil there. The final closure report originally recommended that that pile was going to go into the pond, swampy area next to it, to also help encapsulate that. DEP has since recently come back and said they're not happy with that final design, and they have asked them to change the scope of the design, so that is where they are now, which will, the new design will probably remove the soils from underneath the swampy area and put them into those piles to have a final cap, which will mean that we will likely have a raised type of cap system landfill enclosure there.
Yeah, it'll look better than what it does now?
Yeah, it will look better than what it does now, it'll be a final cap. Yeah. I, originally, we were hoping that that would allow us to have a level site in there and be able to use that property or something, 'cause that was kind of what originally was supposed to be doing. But with the new change, I haven't seen the revised plans yet, but they are working on them.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anybody else have anything?
I just have, I just have a question for Heather. It's got nothing to do with this, it's not on the agenda.
And you're out of water.
Can I talk about it? It's just, um... All of this is, is, um, east of Road, and I know they flogged it, and the, the lines that... Are we gonna repaint those lines?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
I know, but I have two questions. I have two questions. Okay, in February, you talked about cutting trees at Oakdale Cemetery on Pass Street. I'm wondering if it's gonna...
What fell down? We, we, we haven't, we've talked about the possibility of removing trees along the cemetery to be able to make more cemetery spots. And speaking to my people there, would not just be removing trees, it would also be removing the roots, because there was no dirt there to bury anybody. I don't, they didn't see it as actually being very cost-effective use of anything.
So they just took them?
Yeah.
Okay, and my other question... I'm not sure if this is DPW, but I wrote this down. What about the handicapped?
We have a motion, we have somebody talking, just let her finish.
Handicap right about here?
Yeah, um, I, I wrote this down, this is, I think this was from the town council meeting. Uh, you guys were talking about it, and somebody said, "Well, there's no handicapped councilors." Well, so what? I mean, we're supposed to be...
Yeah, we have to maintain the handicap accessible, yes.
Yeah, what's gonna happen to it?
Yeah, motion on table.
Alright, motion, there's a motion to adjourn what? You can talk to Heather about this after the meeting, okay?
Adams and Lanz look at evaluation on the chairmanship, I don't have, not that.